Welcome, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM. Time for our regularly scheduled board meeting of January the 21st, 2020. At this time, I'm asking Mr. Adam McCook to do our invocation and our pledge. If everyone will please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Everyone, please bow your head. As soon as we finish the prayer, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you have blessed us with. Please be with the sick and the ones with heavy hearts that you will touch them with your healing hand. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to meet as a county. I pray for your protection of the U.S. Military as they keep our country safe and defend our freedom to worship you in the gathering public. I pray for the safety of all of our first responders so that they can come to work and return to their families safely. I pray now, as we gather here tonight for this meeting, that we will have a meaningful discussions that will help us build each other up, do what's best for Swanee County, and glorify your name. Help us to share the things that will benefit Swanee County and draw people through the kingdom. Help us to deal with different challenges that we are facing as a county, state, and nation. May we approach each other with respect and kindness, Lord, to create an environment of cooperation in this room. Help us to be one in the spirit. Please be with each and one of us as we depart. Keep us safe doing the things we do in your will. In Jesus' name we believe and pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McCook. Before we get started, on behalf of the Board, I would just like to, for everyone that's family, friends, and coworkers of Mr. Eddie Hand, I would like to extend a very warm welcome. It's gonna be a very special night for him and for all of you, and we're glad to be able to be a part of it. We have just a couple of items we've got to go through real quick here that's normal business. Couple of minutes, and we'll be getting right into the ceremony. First up tonight, we have approval of minutes for the January 7th, 2020 Regular Board Meeting. Do I have any questions or concerns or comments? Do I have a motion?
I have nothing other than a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gamble.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the consent items. We have items two through 11. Does anyone wish to pull anything for discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion approved, Mr. Chief.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, a second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. As we move forward here, I'm gonna turn this portion of the meeting over to our county administrator, Mr. Randy Harris.
If you would, just remain seated while the honor guard enters the auditorium. And Commissioners, if you don't mind, if you would come around here so you'll have a better view of this ceremony. I'd like to invite, I don't know where he ran off to. Eddie, come on up here with us. Misses Hand. Before we start through this oath of office, I'm just gonna go over a couple of things with you so the public knows. We've had quite a few meetings and outlined the expectations of the county and my expectations for you. And I told you when we met first that I'm gonna be watching very closely, make sure that you're up to the challenge. I knew you'd been with the department for a lot of years, but I'd never worked as closely with you as I've had the opportunity to in the last several months. And I think you're up to the challenge. And I shared that with you before, but I want to share it with you publicly. And that's why we're here tonight, to just go ahead and seal this thing. So, I'm glad that you made it. I'm glad that you're up to the challenge. And I think you're gonna do great things with the department because you're, and you're working with some wonderful people. I've had an opportunity to work at a distance with some of them and a little bit closer with others, but I think you've got wonderful men and women that you're gonna be responsible for. I think you can handle that portion of responsibility that's all yours. So just, where's our Bible? Will you place your left hand on there and raise your right hand? Just repeat after me. I'm gonna tie a lot of these long stretches together just to see if you're up to that. Aye, Eddie Hand?
Aye, Eddie Hand.
As the chief, or as the Fire Chief in Swanee County Fire Rescue?
As the Fire Chief in Swanee County Fire Rescue.
Pledge to carry out the duties of Fire Chief to the best of my ability.
Pledge to carry out the duties of Fire Chief to the best of my ability.
I will honor and respect the mission.
I will honor and respect the mission.
The goals, purpose, and policies of Swanee County Fire Rescue.
The goals, purpose, and policy of Swanee County Fire Rescue.
I pledge, pledge to promote and protect the best interests of Swanee County Fire Rescue.
I pledge to promote and protect the best interests of Swanee County Fire Rescue.
Through fiscal responsibility, honesty, integrity, and loyalty.
Through fiscal responsibility, honesty, integrity, and loyalty.
I will never allow personal feelings nor danger to self to deter me from my responsibilities.
I will never, you know, I will never.
I will never allow personal feelings nor danger to self.
I will never allow personal feelings nor danger to self.
To deter me from my responsibilities.
To deter me from my responsibilities.
I will respect the property rights of all men and women.
I will respect the property rights of all men and women.
The laws of my country.
The laws of my country.
And members I serve with.
And members I serve with.
I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust.
I recognize the badge of my office.
Symbol of public faith and trust. I solemnly swear that I have all the qualifications required of my position.
I solemnly swear I have all the qualifications for my position.
And I accept this self-imposed obligation as my responsibility.
And I accept this self-imposed obligation.
Obligation as my responsibility. And make these promises freely.
Make these promises freely.
And upon my honor.
And upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. If y'all will be seated, we're gonna, we've got a couple more things to do here. You know, I would just hand this badge to you, but I'm, I'm struggling trying to get it opened here. Yeah, it's getting there. There we go. Thought we were gonna have to call in for a pair of ice grips. Okay, I'll now present the helmet. Actually, you better pass that off to Mrs. Hand. We've got a greater task for you here. Go ahead and present the act.
We'll present arms. Order arms.
Okay, now, this will conclude the oath of office. I've got one other thing that I want to do, so don't everybody jump up and start stirring. If y'all will step back just a little bit, I'm gonna invite the Commissioners to come up so we can take some photos. Really would like to get this out of the way.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to invite family members that want to get a photo to stay. I don't think we have a great deal more left with the meetings, and we will rearrange back up here for some additional photos if you'd like to do that.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call, if anyone from the public has any question, comments, or concerns that they wish to discuss about county business that's really not about our new Fire Chief.
I'll step down and speak just for a minute, if that's okay? I won't use the whole three minutes that I think I'm given.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the Swanee County Historical Mission, I wanted to thank the Board, the City Council, Chamber of Commerce, all of our public and visitors and volunteers that came last week to our mixer. We had between 200 and 300 people, and I was pleasantly surprised with the number, and everybody seemed to enjoy the museum, so I just wanted to throw that out to the public and those who may be viewing this, two or three people that watched this video after the meeting, and to thank everyone for attendance. Several Commissioners were there, several from the Chamber, from the city, plus the public, so thank all of y'all for that mixer. It was a great success.
Thank you, Mr. Musgrove. Chief Hand, that's the first time it's been said, Chief Hand. Welcome.
That's right. Thank you very much. Chairman, Commissioners, first off, let me take this opportunity to thank Mr. Harris and, and you guys on the Board for the trust you have in me taking this position. I've been with this department for 21 years, from the days that we were a one-man engine, pretty much from its inception. And it excites me to be able to continue the mission that we've been working towards without having someone from the outside come in and try to change the things that we've been working so hard to achieve. I want to echo what Mr. Harris said. I have a tremendous staff in our, in our Administration Department. All of our officers and our firefighters are second to none within this state, and we definitely have the premier rural department in the state of Florida. And I'm gonna work tirelessly to make sure that we continue to grow and move forward. The main reason that I wanted to get up here and speak, though, was to inform you of a, a fundraiser that we're gonna be doing, helping Vivid Visions on March 14th. It's gonna be a softball tournament. We've had this, it's been a city fire, county fire game for the last several years, which we're the undefeated champions for many years running, by the way. But we're trying to grow it into a larger, larger event. Commissioner Gamble's been at one of the meetings with, with me with Vivid Visions, and he graciously has offered up the County Commissioners, along with some other county department folk.
Hoping that y'all would agree.
To put, to put a team together. This is gonna be a fun event. We're trying to get as many teams as we can together to make it a larger event than it's been in the past and draw more people. We've got a bunch of really cool stuff for that day planned, and we'd love for you guys to join us and put together a team. It's all in fun. We're, I'm not sure if we're gonna continue on with our, we're gonna do our best to keep our undefeated status, but I know Live Oak Police Department, they're, they're gonna bring in some ringers this year trying to beat us, and...
Well, I wouldn't have volunteered this, but I watched them play last year, and I kinda figured we had a chance.
Well, the only reason I'm gonna agree and, and do this is because I know we got a good paramedic staff.
I will tell you, there was a few of us that we thought we were gonna need it last year.
We'll get some pinch runners.
But, but it's a, it's a really fun event, and, and we would love to make it a larger event and see how much, you know, money we really can raise for these folks. We're talking about doing some food for them as well and kinda make it a, a whole fun day. Get the Paw Patrol, they're looking at a bunch of different things for, for the fundraiser to try to raise as much money as we can for Vivid Visions, and that's such a great cause. So...
What, what we were hoping for is Live Oak Fire, Swanee Fire Rescue, maybe Sheriff's Department, Police Department, and the Board. When I say the Board, I mean any of the departments under us that, that wanna field a team. So maybe we can get four or five teams together and go out there and have a, a good fun day, fellowship, and, and raise some money for...
What's, what's the date on that?
March 14th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do want to bring to your attention, though, I mean, the only thing I think the Board has done as a group, competition-wise, is the lawnmower race, and we are the champions.
Yeah, I was there. You cheated. No, that was, I'll tell you, that was a very fun event as well, and that's, and that's kinda what we're trying to do. We're trying to turn this into a really fun event. It, it really is, you know, last year, I don't know, we played like 20 innings, because when the game got over, it was just, we wanted to keep going. Because it was such a good time. And we, you know, we quit keeping score really after the, after the game was over because, well, they couldn't count as high as me. But yeah, we're, we're really looking forward to it. I'd love for you guys to join in and get some of the other county departments, you know, some of their employees. I know there's only five of you, you know, of y'all, so it'd be hard to put a baseball team, you know, softball team together, but we got plenty of other folks within the county. And unfortunately, we've got some really good softball players within the county that y'all will be able to recruit on y'all's side, so... But I'd love for you guys to, to join in on that with us and, and just have a really good day.
Before you finish, I would like you to share with the, the audience about the trucks that you got coming, and, and one of them's going in the show down there.
Well, we're, we're hoping. We just went out last week to South Dakota, or week before last, South Dakota, and did our final inspection on our two tanker trucks. They had a few issues that had to be taken care of at Freightliner. I have not gotten 100% confirmation if it's gonna make the show. Fire Rescue East is one of the largest fire conferences in the southeast. It starts tomorrow in Daytona. They're trying to get one of those here for that trade show, so Swanee County will have a representation of a truck in that show. Last year, it was on the agenda for us to get our, one of our new engines that we placed in service in there, and unfortunately, they ran past due on their delivery date, and we weren't able to get them in. So, we're hoping that they're gonna get one of them here, but I haven't gotten, haven't gotten final confirmation if it's gonna make it in time. They were waiting on it to come back from Freightliner. But we did, we will have those two back in the county within the next few weeks, if, even if it doesn't make the show. We also are probably a week or so, two weeks away of putting two new ambulances in service that we picked up in Houston last month. We're just awaiting the permits from the state for those to go in service and a little bit more equipment that has to come in. So, for those of you that didn't get to see it since the last time that I've been able to get up and speak in front of the Board, we had our push-in ceremonies for the three new engines. It turned out amazing at every one of them. We had a great, you know, great showing from the community in each area as we did it, and it was a, a very special occasion for us that we hope to continue on in the future as we get new trucks in service. So, we're, we're really moving forward and, and getting this equipment that you guys have been so gracious enough to allow us to get with the, and our guys are, are super proud of, of the equipment that they get to respond in. Thank you guys very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, you have anything you'd like to add? That's the first. Mr. Vatt, anything?
Yes, sir.
All right. Board members, we'll start with Mr. Richardson closing comments.
Just simply say congratulations to Chief Hand, and I think he's, he's always been a good part of this organization and this department, and I think he's gonna be a good leader. He's already shown that in the past few months, so big shoes to fill. I think he's done a really good job of filling them. Thank you.
Mr. Fleming?
I would like to say congratulations to Chief Hand. I was already calling him chief. I guess that was kinda prophetic. But congratulations to you, and I know that you will do a great job. You've been in the system for quite a while, and, and we do look for bigger, brighter things to come. I won't say better, but things to come. Congratulations.
Mr. Gamble?
Chief Hand, congratulations, sir. I think I speak for all of us when you say you got this Board's support. We know what the mission is, and we know that you're the man to get it done, along with your staff. You got great staff, and I believe from the ones I've talked to that you've got the support of all them as well. And I'm a short timer here on the Board, but you got my support from here on out, and afterwards, if I can do anything to help you, I'd be glad to you. Couple of things real quick, fellas. We were in Tallahassee, what was it, Mr. Jimmy, where you at, last Thursday? Wednesday and Thursday for our rural county promotion of Swanee County. We had a superstar there with us. I don't know if any of y'all know her or not, but...
I was there.
No, no, not you. Ms. Fleming, she stole the show out there promoting Swanee County. We had a booth set up with promotional items from several of our local businesses, and we had representatives coming in and out. It was, it was good, and I met, we met, I don't know, hundreds of people. Only one didn't know where Live Oak was. Now, we'll say, all the other ones knew where Live Oak was because of the busy bee.
Busy bee.
But, but it was a good turnout for, for those that showed, and Ms. Fleming, thank you. It was, we had a good time, and Swanee County was well-represented. And thank you, Jimmy, for putting it together and getting us up there. One other quick thing, I know we've talked about it before, but Mr. Harris and Mr. Vatt, if y'all got some free time, I know y'all don't have much to do, but the, the dirt road issues in some of these subdivisions, I've got several phone calls yesterday and today. I don't know if they, if they had some kind of meeting throughout the county that these unmaintained roads. I know we looked at the MSBUs a while back for maybe placing MSB on them for, for one time or yearly maintenance. If y'all can just see if there's anything we overlooked on that, I told them I'd bring it up tonight and, and just ask y'all about it. So, I kind of explained everything that we've gone through and the way we've looked at it, but I told them we'd look at it one more time, if y'all have an opportunity.
We can do that.
Other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Commissioner Hale?
Yes, sir. I got several things. I'll try to make it quick, 'cause I know everyone's to take some pictures here. First of all, the MLK parade yesterday, we had a great time there. I loved seeing people come out, the kids. Lynn scared me a few times driving the golf cart, but other than that, we, we did make it out okay.
And it was cold.
It was cold, no doubt about that. Someone had mentioned earlier, and I, and I agree, I, I can't tell you guys enough how we have a great staff, and it starts from our office, from Ms. Debbie and Mandy and everyone out there at Public Works, and all the way down through our, our guys that run the graders and mow the grass, and I tell you, we're just, as Board members, or I feel I am lucky to have the staff that we have, and hats off to Mr. Harris for that. Same thing with you, Mr. Hand, Chief Hand. I'm a firm believer, if you surround yourself with good people, you'll be successful. I feel like you have done that, so I'm, I'm excited about your future and our, our Fire Department's future. Congratulations on that. One thing I did want to talk about, and I'll save it for last, I guess, but we talked, we had our last meeting about 180th, the closing of the bridge, the detour. One thing that I don't think we actually took into consideration, we do have a small business out there, and if there's any way, I would like for our sign department to create a real nice sign, one reflective that we can put up that would have that name on it, it's Customs, Mobley's Custom Meets, maybe put a detour sign to show people around, because he does have a lot of customers that come from out of town to try to get to his place, and it's, it's gonna be hard for them to find. He had a hard time the last time, so if we can maybe address that...
Yeah, that, we did, we've talked about it in the past, but it, it didn't get brought up at that last meeting, and I agree with Hale on that, that if, if we could make that happen, that'd be great.
Thank you, guys. Eric talked about the museum. That was a, a great showing. I'm proud of you, Eric, for that. The place looks amazing. I left from there and, and took off down to Live Oak Christian Church for a HOA meeting with the Sugar Mill Farm people, all the people that live out there in that subdivision. It was a great meeting. I was able to tell them a little bit about what we do here and some of the things we're working on, but we got some great feedback, and Mr. Greg Scott was there with me for that one. I knew the sheriff was there as well, but something was brought up. Greg, do you want to talk about it, or you just want me to, it's real quick? Okay, so our Parks and Recreation Department, and then Greg's gonna make this happen, but there are swing sets out there that we can install for children that are in wheelchairs. And that's something that, I know we've worked towards it. I know some of our places are handicap accessible, but I think that would be something that would go a long way with our community. And, and maybe we don't see them out there, 'cause they don't go, because they know there's nothing there for them. So, I definitely want to see us work on something for, for those children that have those disabilities. One last thing, I hate to even talk about it, 'cause I know y'all gonna throw stuff at me, but the River Task Force, City of Valdosta, I'll just, real quick, I had Mr. Harris and Mr. Jimmy Norris go with me to the last meeting to the City of Valdosta. There was a meeting earlier that day in Madison. Senator Mumford had a special call meeting. Georgia officials were invited. Not one showed up. So we had a meeting that night, and we went to their neck of the woods, so to speak. I don't even think all the councilmen were there, and I think one got up and left halfway through the meeting. So, it concerns me of how concerned they are, or lack of concern they have. But we did have a good meeting. I really don't have no more to say than that, other than we're putting the pressure on them. I want our communities to know that we're putting pressure on them. We've got other counties that are backing us, that are part of this River Task Force Board. We're not taking this lightly, and my Board supports me, you know, when I go there, and so I just want you guys to know, we hear you, and, and we're going and fighting and doing as much as we can. So, don't think we, just 'cause we don't talk about it every time, doesn't mean we're not doing something about it. I want you guys to know that, so... And other than that, that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Commissioner Hale.
Chairman, could I add just a touch to what Mr. Hale mentioned? On the two big grants we received, one, or actually three, one for the Heritage Park and two for the Sportsplex, four unique abilities, the swings are going to be part of that Phase Two, so that will be included in, in that grant. But if you remember, we got half a million dollars for Heritage, which we did some accessibility improvements there, excuse me. Also at the Sportsplex, we did the first round of improvements there with, for unique abilities, and now we're doing the second round, turfing the fields, but also the playground was the, is the big part of what we're doing also. Just to add, and I'm probably out of line, but you know me, I'm, if it's in my heart, I'm gonna say it. The, on the River Task Force, I know when I go to Valdosta, I spend a lot of money. If I'm shopping with, I take the bride, and we go shopping and have dinner or whatever, economics is a big factor in what we spend in Valdosta. And maybe appropriate to show up at one of their council meetings and share that with them if they have public comments also, as citizens. I wouldn't go as a...
Right.
Mean necessarily, but I do spend private money, too.
And to go along with that, something I didn't mention, guys, I know we just think about the contamination of the river, but it runs deeper than that. I mean, we, we've got, our tourism is taking a hit right now. Me and Mr. Norris was talking about this today. We're getting a bunch of horrible feedback. Spirits of Swanee is experiencing, even though they're upriver from... Spirits of Suwannee is experiencing, even though they're upriver from it, people just put the two and two together. Not to mention, you know, you start getting into people's pockets, there's people that own property on the river that wanna sell it, and there's real estate offices that wanna sell that property, and no one's benefiting, no one, property's not moving on the Suwannee River. I mean, it's, it's impacts us in so many different ways that people just don't think about, so.
Well, economics drives the train, so.
It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is that all you have, Mr. Hale?
I'm done.
All right.
Sorry.
I had a couple things here, real quick. I'd, just first, I'd like to congratulate Chief Hand, super proud of you, known you for a long, long time, and I got all the faith in the world. And as you knows, if there's any, ever anything that you do that's not right, we're the first ones to hear about it, so you'll get that phone call. But I have all the faith and trust in you. The, the one thing I would like to say for any of us, it don't matter who it is, it don't matter who it is in the audience, who it is up here, Chief Hand, there's people that, that mold you and make you who you are, and they get overlooked a lot of the time, and that's your parents. And I've known Chief Hand's parents for a lot of years, and. And that makes all the difference in the world. He raised two good boys. And that's what it takes. It takes us that has little kids now to, to do the right thing. With that being said, I would like to also thank Mr. and Ms. Fleming, especially Ms. Fleming. I was just picking at y'all a little bit ago, but y'all do so much for Suwannee County and go out and travel and, and speak up for us and, and get us recognized and keep us on the map, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that being said, I got one last thing I'm gonna share with you. It's a quote from Dr. King. And I want, I want all of us Board to listen to it, and I want Mr. Hand and all of our department heads to listen. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." With that being said, all I need is a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.